Call the Finance Committee meeting to order, and may I ask the clerk to call the roll?
Please take your seats. Councilmember Conklin.
Here.
Councilmember Palumbo.
Here.
Councilmember Ortiz.
Yes.
Vice President Miller.
Here.
President Scott.
Here.
Thank you. I should note, we're also joined by Councilmember Spall Patterson. Mics on the committee, Ortiz and Hague, and the lovely tanned Welcome Back Councilmember Palumbo. And I see you even brought sunshine with you.
I did. The wind.
Thank you. Int introductory number 63, amending section 111-75 of the municipal code with respect to towing of vehicles used in quality of life violations. Any questions on introductory number 63? If not, a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I say aye, carries 5-0. Int introductory number 64, amending ordinance number 2014-197, authorizing professional service agreement for appraisal services. Questions on introductory number 64?
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I say aye, carries 5-0. Int introductory number 65, approving the acquisition of real property from the Rochester Urban Renewal Agency, and with a public hearing to be held, I would ask for a motion to consider.
So moved.
Moved in second. It all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I say aye, carries 5-0. Int introductory number URA 2, companion piece for the real property sale, again because of a public hearing, motion to consider, please.
I'll move to consider.
Moved in second. It all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I say aye, carries 5-0. Int introductory number 66, authorizing the mayor to sign legal documents relating to the Clarissa Street reunion. Questions on introductory number 66? Motion to adopt?
I'll move to adopt.
Moved in second. It all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Say aye, carries 5-0. Int introductory number 67, authorizing an agreement with Transpro Consulting. There have been some questions on this, they were answered late this afternoon. I'd like to have this held in committee while people have a chance to review the answers to the questions, and we'll review it later. Any additional questions on introductory number 66? I mean 67. Int introductory number 88, resolution approving appointments to the Greater Rochester Sports Authority. Questions on introductory 88? I think the main question was, when is it going to go away? Any answers?
The timetable was mid-March, but we don't believe that that timetable will be met. We wanted to make sure that the city's interests were represented on that board, and currently we don't have a representative, and that's the reason why we're appointing.
Thank you.
So moved to adopt.
Moved, is the mayor have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. It all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I say aye, carries 5-0. The additional questions for Finance? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you, one and all.
I'd like to call the Neighborhood and Business Development Committee to order, if the clerk can call the roll.
Caroler.
What?
4:05.
4:05.
It's okay. It's noticed for 4:05, so I said 4:05.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking, I'm moving right along. I'm into Parks and Public Works.
Councilmember Palumbo.
I'm here.
Councilmember Conklin.
She might be here.
Councilmember Patterson. Vice President Miller.
Here.
President Scott.
Here.
We're also joined by councilmembers Hague, Ortiz, and Spall. Int introductory number 68 is authorizing the sale of real estate. The motion to adopt that?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number, what did I do? URA 3 is a resolution approving the Rochester Urban Renewal Agency 2015-16, annual budget, performance measures for 2015, and performance measures for 2014. I think folks have had an opportunity to review those. Does anyone have any questions?
Move to adapt.
Moved in second. It all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number 69 is authorizing a property tax exemption, and authorizing, and in lieu of tax agreement, for the Wedge Point Apartments project.
Move to adapt.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number 70 is authorizing loan agreements for the Wedge Point Apartments project. Any questions?
Move to adapt.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number 71, authorizing a grant agreement with Scott's Miracle Grow Company.
Move to adapt.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number 72 is a resolution approving an appointment to the City Planning Commission.
Move to adapt.
Second.
Been moved in second. It all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number 73 is appropriating funds and authorizing agreements for the Emergency Assistance Repair Program. Any questions on this? Seeing none, could I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number 74, amending the zoning code, chapter 120 of the municipal code with regard to outdoor storage. Public hearing will be held at the March 17, 2015 council meeting.
Move to consider.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There is MBD item number 61, amending ordinance number 2014-277, authorizing loan agreements with the Eastman Garden Apartments that we've held, that, at the request of the administration, the administration has proposed an amendment with regard to that loan agreement, and I was just wondering if you could share with council how, what the changes are, and there was in particular, a couple of questions regarding the zero interest.
To, we moved to amend the payment structure in a way that would have primarily principal payments to ensure that we would get full repayment. We extended the term of the loan over time, and we saw that there was, there were two options. One option would be either a balloon payment, which seemed untenable from the city's perspective, or to be able to accept payments that were not including interest, but only principal in order to make sure that we had the full repayment of the loan, and full repayment of the loan on time.
Does anyone, Councilmember Conklin?
Thank you. So, in effect, we are waiving interest on this loan.
Correct.
Have we waived interest on any other loans?
Not to my knowledge. I think that, in this case, we were recommending a lack of interest in order to make sure that we were able to make the project go forward, and obviously, it does require that we waive interest, but we believe that the community benefit in lieu of the interest payments would certainly be consistent with.
But that's not the way it was originally proposed, so what?
Correct.
What transpired that we had, that it's necessary in order to make it a viable project to waive the, I mean, what changed from the time we originally began this agreement, or the proposal?
Okay, so, yes, there have been many changes, and I'm going to allow our staff person who's been managing the project to speak to those changes.
Eastman Gardens project was originally authorized with...
I don't think your mics are.
Can you hear me? Okay. Eastman Gardens was originally planned with more units than ultimately were allowed through a review of National Park Services in New York.
As you go through the explanation, would you quantify it? So, what, the number of units has decreased?
Yes.
By how many?
From the time of authorization, it reduced from 55 to 52.
So, there's been a net reduction of three units?
Well, from the time of our authorization, from the time of submission to the state of New York, there were originally a request for 59 units, and the resulting reduction by seven units, all of which would have been market rate units, has shifted and reduced the projected revenue for the project. Doing that created some other concerns and issues relative to the amount of funding that New York State was able to put into the project, and the reduction in assistance from the state, coupled with the reduced revenue projections, have caused a need to reduce the payments due to cash flow.
So, why wasn't that spelled out when the request was made to change the terms of the loan?
In September, we did not know the outcome of the review of National Park Services.
When did you find that out?
That was determined in December, and in the interim, we've been working with the developer and New York State to identify what the possibilities are, along with the tax credit investor, and...
So, that took three months without getting to council with any explanation of why? What was the, what's the total amount of interest that was included in the original package?
The original package was looking to have a total payment amortized over 30 years of approximately a million and, I think, $50,000, and the reduction in units caused a cash flow that also added to a need for a couple of additional components, including an addition...
So, what's the total amount of interest the city will be foregoing on this loan?
Four hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay, and is that basically the cost of seven units? So, you're saying that each unit...
Councilmember Conklin, can I make a suggestion? I'm going to hold this amendment in committee, and I'm going to keep this referral in committee, because it was not my understanding, my understanding was a net-net, it was just a different way to finance this, to not have a balloon payment. I didn't, I didn't get from the referral that we were losing...
Well, I think it's been very poorly spelled out to council.
I think what might be helpful if MBD could lay out what we were going to do with what we were going to get paid back, and then next to it, lay out what this proposal is, so that it's very clear what we had originally, what was originally planned, and what is now being proposed, so that folks can see, can compare it side by side. I think that would be very helpful. And then, the difference in the project, and sort of the loss that they might experience from their loss of the units, would be also, would help, I think, make it make more sense.
Will do.
And we'll also include why we decided to do this way. I do know that some of this was a requirement of New York State for us to even proceed with the Eastman Dental Dispensary Project, and we could not do, we tried to figure out other ways to finance this and to be helpful, but this was the best way to do that. But we can outline all of that and have that for you ready for Tuesday.
That'd be very helpful. Thank you. Councilmember Hague?
And as part of that explanation, I just, I guess I'd like to understand how, why the number of units were reduced, what the rationale and logic between, I think that's National Park Service, right, or National, because of the historic tax credit piece. I'd just like to understand how we went from X number of units to Y number of units.
We do have the developer here, who could talk to you about why it was reduced, but it was basically, I believe, because of the historical nature of the building, and different places that they wanted to include housing or units, they required them to do it differently, but...
Nelson?
Perhaps you could also introduce yourself for the record.
We had an area in the building where the windows are very tall, we were hoping to do two stories of apartments. The National Park Service would not permit that, and that reduced the number of apartments.
Because of the historic nature of the building?
Because of the historic nature of the building, and as a result, the income was lost that we had projected for those apartments. The cost of the building was primarily a result of restoring the building, not building the apartments, actually, that's maybe a third of the cost. So, the savings that we incurred by not building those apartments was not that significant.
Okay.
Good answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spall?
So, just a follow-up. So, as you're doing all this reporting and analysis for us, a little bit more, the mayor referred to it, but a little bit more about the role of the state. I think that that background is very important as well. So, it sounds like you said the state was going to give less money as well. Is that accurate? I didn't understand that. Is anybody?
In the original proposal, the state was going to be providing close to $2 million in housing trust funds based on the 59 units.
Gotcha.
Now that the project is 52 units, the maximum they were able to offer in housing trust funds was $1.2 million. So, that was an $800,000 reduction in subsidy. That impacted both the development cost, but also the possibility of revenue due to reduced units.
So, that's very important information that's also lacking here. So, $800,000 reduction on nine units? I mean, that's 40 percent, no, the state's reducing it by 40 percent? Am I doing that right in math? Just because of reducing nine units? Anyway, anything you can give us before Tuesday, I think would be helpful. Thanks.
We'll do that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. So, we'll keep this in committee. Any other business to come before the Neighborhood and Business Development Committee? Seeing none, this committee is adjourned.
check. Oh, we are good.
Councilmember...
And have the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Hague.
Here.
Councilmember Spall.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Vice President Miller.
Here.
President Scott.
Here.
We are also joined by councilmembers Conklin, McFadden, Palumbo, and Ortiz. Int introductory number 75, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $1,886,000 of bonds of said city to finance the reconstruction of various water mains related to the 2015 Water Main Extension and Improvements Program in the city. Any questions?
So moved.
Second.
There is, any, are, we have a, did I hear a second?
Right.
I'm sorry. Thank you. We have a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I say aye, passes 5-0. Int introductory number 76, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $1,429,000 bonds of said city to finance the cost of the parking garage repair and reconstruction program in the city. In the city. Any questions on introductory number 76? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I say aye, passes 5-0. Int introductory number 77, authorizing an agreement for the Emergency Communications Facility Console Replacement Project. Number of questions about this? Are there any additional questions? If not, do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I say aye, passes 5-0. Int introductory number 78, authorizing a professional services agreement with TY Lynn International for the Charles Carroll Plaza and Genesee Crossroads Parking Garage Roof Slab Reconstruction Project. Number of questions on this from a number of council members? Anything that has not been answered sufficiently, or any additional questions? If not, do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I say aye, passes 5-0. Int introductory number 79, authorizing agreements for materials testing services. Any additional questions, or any new questions for introductory number 79? If not, do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I say aye, passes 5-0. Int introductory number 80, authorizing agreements for the Public Market Wintershed Renovation and Expansion Project. Any additional questions on introductory number 80?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I say aye, passes 5-0. Bond ordinance of the City, introductory number 81, is a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $508,000 bonds of said city to finance the cost of design and construction of the Public Market Wintershed Renovation and Expansion Project. Any questions on introductory number 81?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I say aye, passes 5-0. Int introductory number 82, authorizing an ammendatory agreement for resident project representation services for the Browncroft Neighborhood Street Lighting Project. Have a public hearing to be held at the March 17, 2015 council meeting. Are there any questions on this item? If not, do I have a motion to, I'm sorry, do I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I say aye, passes 5-0. There is no additional business to come before this committee, we are adjourned.
No, I have no arts and culture this morning.
He has to wait one minute?
Thirty seconds. Monday.
Did she get back last night? Give you time, that's close.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember McFadden.
Here.
Councilmember Hague.
Here.
Councilmember Spall.
Here.
Vice President Miller.
Here.
President Scott.
Here.
We are also joined by Councilmember Conklin, Councilmember Palumbo, Councilmember Patterson, and the other one left. Okay. Int introductory item number 83, authorizing an agreement for explosive detection K-9 team grant. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Int introductory item number 84, authorizing an agreement for motor vehicle theft and insurance fraud prevention program and amending to 2014-15 budget. Comments, questions? Councilmember Conklin?
Thank you. My oft-repeated question, particularly on grants going into the police department, is that we do not include the cost of fringe benefits. I think it's important to point out that what these, what receiving these grants does is, year after year, costs the City of Rochester taxpayers additional money by increased overtime costs that get factored into pension costs by, you know, I'm not sure, Chris has left, but I think it's over 60% of every dollar spent on a uniformed officer, and there's an additional 60 cents that goes to cover the fringe benefits by the City of Rochester. So, I think we need to look very clearly at the cost of receiving these graces to the city, and I would ask that every time one of these grants comes in for approval, that it be estimated what the true cost to the City of Rochester is. I don't, I really question how much money we're getting, how much value we're getting for our dollars. You know, 30 arrests is not a huge clearance rate on 82 investigations of auto thefts. So, I just, it disturbs me, as the Chair of Finance, that we, when we vote on accepting these grants, we do not fully understand and inform the true cost to the city of residents.
Thank you, Councilmember. We'll make sure we get you that information.
Any other comments, concerns? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Int introductory item number 85, authorizing grant agreements for the police, citizen patrols, and community policing and amending to 2014-15 budget.
My same question.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Int introductory item number 86, authorizing agreements for appropriating funds for the Summer of Opportunity Youth Program. Comments, questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Int introductory item number 87, authorizing ammendatory agreements for the Teenage Pregnancy Prevention Program. Comments, questions? Normally, this is where I chime in, but I will not.
Shall I?
I just want to add that I just need to make a point, that I do work at the University of Rochester, so I just wanted to disclose that, and council has said I do not need to abstain on this pregnancy prevention grant.
Councilmember Conklin?
You know, I am glad to see that, I asked a question about agencies supplying condoms. I'm very glad to see... I'm very glad to see that we do distribute them at our rec centers, they are fairly effective means of curbing pregnancy, along with S T Ds, and I'm glad to see the city participating in them.
I'm considering saying something, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this, but I'm gonna piggyback off of your condoms question, because I was actually in DC, and I was bothered by something. Where do we get the condoms from? The reason why I ask this is because I found out that some of our condom companies purposely donate defective condoms. For efforts of giving them out in other places. So I just wanna make sure that we verify where we get them from, and I can show you an article that's very disturbing about what happened in Africa, and some other places in the United States, but defective condoms are not cool. And some other things. So, here, other than that, could we at least verify where we got them from and make sure that we don't have defective ones in the pool?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Any other comments to come before the committee? Hearing none, we are adjourned.